Next agenda would be the special meeting of the Glendale City Council. Your pleasure, Mr. Mayor, if you call it to order.
Sorry, didn't we call the special meeting into order already?
That was a six.
That was the joint city and economic development, now we're doing special city council.
Okay. I believe we did both, though.
Did we?
I did. So I guess we're back with the special meeting.
No, we have not called it to order. I asked if we can call it to order because we are in recess for the joint meeting. The three items that City Manager Ochoa mentioned are all part of a special city council meeting, which we have not yet called to order. And this will be a separate meeting. The other one still remains in recess.
Okay, well, let's call the special meeting into order for March 10, 2015. May we have roll call, please?
Council members, Devine.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Harrison Hanyan.
Here. May we have the report?
Agenda for the March 10, 2015, special meeting of the city council was posted on Friday, March 6, 2015, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Items before you today are Director of Community Development regarding amendments to Title 15 and 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to miscellaneous revisions and minor cleanups. 1A is ordinance for introduction. 2A is Director of Community Development regarding amendments to Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to reasonable accommodation procedures. 2A is ordinance for introduction. 3A is Director of Community Development regarding amendments to Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to changing the review authority discretionary permits in the San Fernando Road Corridor redevelopment project area. 3A is an ordinance for introduction.
Mr. Chou.
Yes.
And, Mr. Mayor, all three items are hearing, so you'll have to open up each one individually.
Okay, let's open the hearing. Mr. Chou.
Yes, sir. The first item that you have is your periodic update and cleanup of the code. As you peruse your staff report, you see a litany of items that I think you would agree generally are not very substantive, but as we do updates of the code, we try to earmark those and then bring them back to you for such cleanup. I believe Mr. Bagdeekian can answer any question that you may have. There is also one amendment that is being passed around to you now with regard to the designation and/or deletion of historic resources and noticing for the designation or deletion from designation. And we wanted to make sure that that was clear, and the new handout, I think, makes it very, very clear, that the designation for historic properties is owner-driven, property-owner-driven. And so you see the changes there for the noticing. However, we are still maintaining a rather kind of general interest vantage point for the deletion, not that that happens very often, but the deletion of historic properties from our list. And Mr. Bagdeekian can give you additional clarification there.
If we want it.
Yes?
No, I mean, if we want it.
Well, he's here. Do you have anything to add, or?
Whatever your preference is.
Okay.
But I just wanted to note what Scott Ochoa has just mentioned. We handed out a revised wording for the first section of the ordinance. The first section, the way it was distributed, removed some noticing for the designation and deletion of historic resources, not for districts, but for individual resources. We realized the issue with deleting a historic resource, and the revised wording maintains the full noticing for the deletion of historic resources, but removes some noticing requirement, the mailing primarily, and the posting of the property for the designation of historic resources. That's the change that was just distributed. The rest of the items, I can go through them. They're mostly cleanup items and codification of practices and zoning interpretations.
You're going to go through all of them?
How many do you have?
It's, I believe, three slides altogether, but the items are explained in the staff report. There are some topographical errors, corrections, and other items like that, but I'm not going to go through each one of them. They're all in the staff report. So this ordinance primarily is for cleanup. Except for the first one that was handed out, it has a minor policy change on it.
Okay. My only concern is to make sure that our viewers hear what they need to hear, otherwise we've seen the staff report.
Well, the item that we handed out.
Is the major one.
That is the one that we would.
It's the first slide, and it's, if I may go through it, it's this item, is the designation of historic resources, and it eliminates the property's posting and the mail notice requirement. But the bulletin boards at the City Clerk's office and the website, the city's website, are still posted. And this doesn't affect the way it was reworded, the deletion of historic resources.
Very well. Do we have any questions?
Did you open the public hearing?
It's been opened already, yes.
I have a couple.
You have something?
Well, he has, you have more?
No, the rest are cleanup items.
Oh, okay.
At the pleasure of the council, I can go through them unless.
Yes, Mr. Najarian.
I have a question with this one. Did we not, maybe two years ago, implement a policy where someone other than the owner of a particular home or property could initiate the historic designation? I remember I was upset about that. I'm saying, you know, the outside neighborhood could come to my house and declare my house a historic resource, and, or that was council?
That was council. Only council can initiate designating a historic resource that has not been designated, initiated by the property owner. That was the addition two years ago. That is not reflected in this.
That's correct.
So would there, my only concern is that there's adequate notice. Let's say council has identified a property.
Those will be noticed adequately, because that will be subject to this whole other provision, which is for those very extreme circumstances that the council sees the necessity to designate a property.
Everything else is owner-initiated.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have, yeah. I just have a couple of questions on, let's see, it's 30.24060, page 3, or 25 in the ordinance. You mentioned that these minor changes may be approved by the Director of Community Development. And I just want to, is there a process in place that one person makes that final decision and not each individual? You know, I'm looking for consistency and uniformity. Who's going to make that final?
I'm sorry, what section is this?
It's on page 25, at the top, first paragraph, and it says, you know, it talks about changes, including but not limited to, and it says, "These changes may be approved by the Director of Community Development." Does that mean that he's going to make the final decision on all the change, every change?
No, this is specifically for precise plan of design overlay zones.
Right.
The initial project is approved by council, but if there are minor changes, and we separated between numerical changes and other more qualitative changes.
Right.
Minor changes may be approved by the Director of Community Development unless it's determined to not be minor, at which point the project gets referred back to council, or the change gets referred back.
But I just want to make sure that one person and not like you, like three different people in the department are making that decision, so that this one says one thing, this one says another, and then there's.
There is one person. The way that we process those changes is that a prepared, written memo is prepared by the staff person, reviewed by the Deputy Director of Community Development for planning. Then the director, whoever that is at that point, will review it, and then concur or does not concur. It's always done, prepared by staff, reviewed by the director, every time.
That's you.
That's, that's.
Okay, all right. And what recourse does the public have, if they don't agree with the changes that are made? Is there any, would the public have any input?
Well, no, in this case, they don't. And let me just explain what these comply, apply to. For example, if you have a PPD, it takes four votes of the council to approve it. Sometimes, along the line, as the project is being implemented, they make minor modifications, either to the floor plans, or to, instead of a restaurant, they want to have something similar to a restaurant in the corner of it. Those little things that come within the understanding of the same categories, then we can allow them by the review of the staff. Otherwise, they would have to apply for a complete zone change and come through the whole process again.
I understand. I just want to make sure that there's one person making this decision, so that it's uniform for everybody.
That would be the director, and it is uniform at every time.
Perfect. Okay, then, then I want to go to, let's see, page, what's the other one? Page 31 of the ordinance. This one, yeah, page 31, and it's basically the same thing, changes for projects and plans and minor changes. And I'm assuming that you do have, you will be the point person, you will be the one that will be making that decision finally?
Correct. Yes. This would be me, and it's always done in conjunction with the design staff's consultation with design staff. By the way, we do this as practice, this is now codified.
Okay, good. And then, I also, where you say you provided modifications or approved, let's see, where is it? Consistent with the objectives of this code and the design guidelines. So you've taken care of design guidelines and the codes, but what about the imposed conditions that are recommended by Design Review Board? That's not mentioned in here.
Well, that is, the imposed conditions are specific conditions. We would never approve something that directly, I mean, that would, that's already, I guess that goes without saying, what you're saying is that we haven't mentioned it.
Right.
That we will not say anything that's directly opposed to any of the conditions. We just don't. That's not part of the practice.
Can you put that language in and just simply add in both these paragraphs?
Unless otherwise.
And conditions of approval imposed by the design authority.
Correct, we could do that.
Perfect. Okay, great, thank you.
Question. Hassan, when it goes, when they go to pull permits, it's going through engineering, whatever it has to meet the building code, changes can occur from the design, correct, based on?
They can, from time to time.
So they must be made because they don't make the building code?
Correct. And oftentimes, those are the changes that we'd review, yes.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing.
I'll move 1A.
Second.
No, wait, wait, wait. I'll introduce the ordinance.
Introduce the ordinance.
With the change recommended by Councilmember Devine.
Closing the hearing.
Okay, we are introducing.
It was introduced by Councilmember.
It was introduced by Councilmember Weaver.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two.
You would open the hearing.
Let's open the hearing.
Thank you.
Did you read into record already?
Yes.
Okay, let's open the hearing.
We have for you a follow-up from an urgency ordinance that the council enacted late last year in December, as it relates to the reasonable accommodations provisions that exist under Americans with Disabilities Act, specifically what type of due process exists for the potential revocation of the accommodations that are made under the code. And wanting to make sure that we have, within the Glendale Municipal Code, the opportunity to revoke and/or amend when we understand that circumstances that led to the allowing of these special accommodations, when those circumstances may have been changed, when there was a misunderstanding, or when they were granted either in error or fraudulently based on misinformation that's provided to the city. So with that, our principal planner, Laura Stotler, has a very brief presentation for you.
It's very brief. Mayor Son Hanyan's members of council. As per the overview, we have a reasonable accommodation that we need to provide for disabled individuals in order for them to be able to live in their home. And what the reasonable accommodation ordinance provides for, it gives them release from land use regulations. Under GMC 30.52, which was adopted in May 2010, we allow for, basically alterations to occur for reasonable accommodation. That would include having a disabled individual show their disability, say why they need an accommodation, and the accommodation would need to be related to their disability. We typically receive two to four of these a year. We've approved every one. There was an urgency in ordinance, and what we're now doing is seeking to codify those provisions. We're amending three sections of the code. That would be 30.41 for duration, just clarifying that reasonable accommodations run with the individual, not with the land. 30.52, we've identified findings that are related to accommodation. Essentially, that's relating the accommodation to the disability. And then we have enforcement provisions in 30.62. We're establishing a revocation procedure and also an appeals procedure that would be similar to other entitlements that we have in the zoning code. Planning Commission recommended that the council approve this ordinance on February 2015, and that concludes my presentation.
I have a question.
Yes.
My question is, in terms of revocation, it's my understanding that some of these permits allow for construction that wouldn't otherwise be allowed in single-family neighborhoods?
That's correct.
So if somebody builds an addition based on this, how do you revoke that? Do you come back later and tell a buyer who may not even be aware that there's such a thing possible, that they have to tear down part of their house?
No, it depends on the degree of the change that's being accommodated. If it is one where they are making structural changes, such as adding an elevator or adding a second story, those may not be, those may stay in effect. They may not have to be removed when the person with a disability is no longer residing at that facility, but other ones would be removed.
So somebody who wanted to, if you were a person with a disability and you planned on selling your house, it might be a smart move to apply for this, put a second story on, increase the price of your property by a third, and then sell it, and we couldn't do anything about that, right?
Well, no, it would have to be related, whatever the changes are, would have to be related to someone residing at the property with a disability.
Oh, I understand that, but they wouldn't have to tell you that they're planning on selling in six months.
Well, that's correct.
So they could.
But it only runs with the individual.
Theoretically, it's possible, and practically, I guess it could happen, but just keep in mind that whoever's certifying that the condition of the individuals that are applying for the accommodation also have to show that they truly need the accommodation, the expansion that's necessary to accommodate their disability. And in most cases, the accommodation is a railing and a setback or a ramp.
Right. But we have had a recent case where there was a situation like that that occurred.
Right.
So it's not beyond the realm of possibility, and it seems like we've been, staff's been told not to question, to a certain extent, the need for such a things, that if somebody has a disability that is demonstratable, that they get the benefit of the doubt, right? So we're not going to say to them, "No, you don't need a second story." It seems like that's not really our.
Law doesn't, probably does not let us to permit or question the necessity for it once it's been established by the.
And considering how things can change, I don't know how you would be able to ever covenant that you are going to live there for the next five years if fate has something else in mind for you.
Right, and you couldn't. I guess my comment is just that this seems to me a perfect excuse for some, for, what would be the right word, for exploitation. And for, that's quite possible, this could be used for excuses for people to do things to property, whether for their own use or for commercial use that we can't control. So it's, it doesn't seem like we have much leeway in saying no, but it does concern me, given that we've had a recent example where the very thing has happened. Not the very thing, but something similar has happened.
What this does for you in that vein is, when somebody were to come and provide that surreptitiously, that information, kind of going along the lines that you're offering, this does have, the point of this action is to provide those revocation measures, where if it can be determined, under the color of the law, that they somehow are incorrect, inaccurate, misleading, then it is not cast in stone, we can reel it back in. If somebody were to go through all of the trouble of bringing somebody with a disability into their home, make the improvement, live there for however long, whether it's a day or a thousand days, once you cross that threshold, there's really nothing else that we can do other than, before they get there, if this really is done in exploitation and abuse, we at least have the revocation process.
And what is the, what's the threshold? So if I have an elderly person living with me, you know, your average 95-year-old, let's say, does that, then I can just put a second floor on my house without, in a neighborhood where it's not allowed normally, just because I have that and that person's assumed to be disabled?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, not necessarily. The accommodation has to be related to the disability in its order to afford that individual the same opportunity to live in their home, for example, that other people enjoy within the same neighborhood. And they would need to establish that the modifications required are, there's a relationship between that level of disability and the modification. And the threshold is fairly low, and that is, would it cause a fundamental modification to the city zoning scheme, or would it create an undue financial hardship to the city to grant those modifications? And in most instances, they're pretty similar to things that we already grant under variances such as setback waivers or height waivers and things of the standard variance-type waivers. And the issue with whether it changes, fundamentally changes a zoning scheme, there is not a lot of case law out on that in particular, but that's something that, you know, we, on a case-by-case basis, will be taking a very close look at to determine whether, for example, a doubling in floor area or other things of that nature that may be requested, in fact, do rise to the level of a fundamental change.
And certainly, if somebody needs that kind of accommodation, I'm not at all suggesting they shouldn't have it. Clearly, they should. I just think that our staff, as they look at these on a case-by-case basis, needs to be sensitive to neighborhood concerns as well, and just make sure that that really is an accommodation that's necessary and unusual, and that is something that, you know, we have a zoning for a reason, we have standards for a reason, and before we waive them, we need to be sure that we take a real, close look at, you know, each and every case.
Mr. Mayor, so let me get this straight. Let's say I have a house that has been built, it complies with all current zoning ordinances, and in the house, I invite an elderly parent who needs a full-time caregiver. Would that permit me to expand my home, to go beyond the FAR and surpass the zoning? Possibly?
It's possible, depending on the disability of the individual that would be residing with you, and that would need to be evaluated.
So that could be an expansion of FAR, it could be a second floor. What if the person coming in has a mental disability, and they really need to have their therapy horse with them? Can I build a stable for that? Possibly. I mean, the answer is possibly, if you meet the certain criteria. So although, I'm sure for 99% of the people that avail themselves of these accommodations that's totally in good faith, but it seems to me that the loophole is big enough to drive a, ride a thoroughbred through, if someone is smart enough. And believe me, our residents are smart enough to figure this out. I mean, you've seen some of our development, entitlement officers be very creative with certain code issues. So, in other words, I don't want that to happen. I want to make sure that we tighten this up so that no one gains our system. Because everyone in the neighborhood will be screaming, "How could you let this happen?" And I don't want to sheepishly say, "Well, we have to provide this because..." Let me just say, I mean, part of you, what you're hearing from the lawyers is that it depends type of answer, only because these are case-by-case analysis. But again, as Jillian mentioned, it's, you have to look at whether the particular request is going, whether it's necessary, and then whether it's going to alter our zoning scheme. So an example you used, I think there'd be a credible argument that providing that type of accommodation might alter our zoning scheme in a particular neighborhood. But again, we can't say for certain anything would be prohibited or anything would be allowed.
So no to the horse, but yes for the second story?
Just depends.
Depends on where it is.
Whether the.
Thumb for the horse.
It just depends.
We know, we know. Is there language in here that says that?
It's basically complying with the reasonable accommodation statutes provided under state and federal law. So I understand kind of where you're coming from, but again, I, you know, there are going to be some cases where it's going to seem maybe a little out of whack, but for the most part, what you see, in the majority of these cases, are the handrail or the ramp in the setback type of thing. Those are most of the cases that we see.
And certainly, if the information is false, fraudulent, it's a misrepresentation, that is the very basis upon which a revocation hearing could be held.
Of course, now that we've talked about it publicly.
Yeah.
We've told the whole city that anybody who wants to double their house size or put a second story on just needs to move their elderly parent in.
Grandma home, yeah.
Grandma home, and you, you've got it.
Actually, we have no shortage of grandmas living with their city, so start building. No kidding. Of course. Thank you, Ms. Stotler. Any more questions? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. We have.
I'll introduce the ordinance at 2A.
Second.
Just any second. introduction only.
The same introduction, okay.
Councilmember Weaver introduced the ordinance. And now, next, we'll present item three.
Just very quickly, sir, we have our senior planner, Kristin Asp, who can answer any questions for you regarding an item originating with council, as you know, with the dissolution of redevelopment, the dissolution of the redevelopment agency, and thus the agency board. The idea of having the agency board as the design review board for projects within the San Fernando Road redevelopment project area, one could argue is superfluous in that those projects should revert back to the normal design review process, i.e. DRB. So what you have before you, if you choose to move forward with a change in the current process, is the staff report, and if you have questions about how that operation might move, Kristin certainly can answer those for you.
Let's open the public hearing. Yes. Any questions, staff?
Question.
Yes, Mr. Najarian.
Currently, what is the fee involved in appealing a action by the DRB to the city council?
I believe appeals are $2,000.
Okay. Is that fee also applicable to a member of the city council that wants it to come forward? We don't currently have a process whereby, like some other cities have, it's sort of a call-up process, so it would require anybody who wants to appeal, could file an appeal, and I think with respect to council members, we have in the past not charged the fee. That's the only thing, I mean, I'm going to the point where I would like any council member to be able to bring it up for review without paying the $2,000.
Would that be any project anywhere in the city, or just in San Fernando special?
What we do have is that the city manager, the city manager can appeal a decision, and that would be probably the best way, because the council could collectively communicate with the city manager, and the city manager could choose that decision.
Under our, I believe, under our streamlining, that Hassan and I have the ability to punt more controversial items up to the review.
Can I just give a concern about this I have?
Sure, please.
Is that, any homeowner, then, will start lobbying us all the time?
Sure.
For us to, they don't want to pay the $2,000 for the house next to them, so they just start hitting up the council members to do it, and I just, I don't want to be in that position.
That's right.
I think it should be us.
And quite frankly, staff would not recommend that, because that could really subject all development to political interaction, and in this case, but you all have the access to the city manager, and the city manager could appeal any decision at any time.
Well, here's the thing. Sometimes members of the council are not exactly seeing eye to eye with the city manager.
In those cases, they can come and get other council members to agree with them, to compel the city manager, with a majority of the council compelling the city manager to appeal the decision, as opposed to one council member.
Now, am I running a follow-the-Brown act if I go and lobby my council members? That would require it to be agendized, to have that discussion.
And that you could always do.
Once again, aren't you worried now that people are just going to start walking in here during oral communications, and I don't want to pay the fee, so I want you guys, you should appeal this for me?
No, ultimately, yeah, but I understand that, but ultimately, let's say when a project is before us, we get the same pressure. The pressure we get is no less, you know, "Don't vote for this, don't approve this," or "approve that, approve this."
Our policy, as you know, is that if council member raises an issue, gets a second, it can appear on an upcoming agenda. And so if the, maybe the check and balance between both what you and Councilmember Friedman are discussing is to bring the item up, I'd like to have this on an agenda. If you do get a second, well, then it goes onto the council agenda, which, maybe not an appeal, but it voices the ability of the council to have that discussion here at this dais, and if you don't get the second, then.
But here's the problem that I foresee. In that discussion, you can't talk about the merits of the issue. You can't say, "I really hate that third-floor balcony, it's too dense, this should be facing, reconfigured on the property." That's correct. That could only be discussed when it is agreed to be agendized. Correct. So you're sort of fighting with your, it's like, "Please, you guys, you know, agendize this." I can't tell you why, because city attorney will say, "I'm going beyond the scope of the hearing," but.
But is that the check and balance between doing it too often versus not doing it at all?
There are times when I watch the design review board where I see things and I wish that they would be appealed, but I don't feel that it's my place to do that, especially when it's private property. I think that's, we have an appeals process for the affected parties. I don't know, I just, I think it's a dangerous road to go down, to start having us pull, you know, almost willy-nilly, just projects we don't like, to start pulling them and appealing them ourselves.
Well, it wouldn't be willy-nilly. I mean, it would be giving the opportunity to speak to the council as to why we think that the decision should be overturned. I think there's, that's good government. And actually, that raises another concern, a due process concern, you really, to extent you want to have it appealed, you can't have a full discussion about what the merits of the project are.
You really, to the extent you want to have it appealed, you can't have a full discussion about what the merits of the project are or aren't. Because if you're having a discussion about whether to appeal it, then you've got to have those discussions of the merits during the appeal, so...
Catch 22.
A little bit. You know, so, you know, I kind of agree with staff, though, the process, the appeal process is there for a reason. And if you're making the policy decision here to transfer this particular authority to the Design Review Board, you should treat them as you do all the other projects.
And I do think our Design Review Board is currently, in the past, has been pretty strict about things. But on the other hand, I think to Mr. Najarian's point, Najarian's point, I think the city manager is fairly sensitive as to projects that are very controversial and may be more likely to bring those to us if they're large-scale and something that the community is very concerned about sometimes. But anyway, we're talking only about the San Fernando Corridor today, right?
Correct.
And I ask this to be brought forward because I don't see why the San Fernando Corridor should be treated differently than everywhere else in the city at this point. It's not a special area. So I think this is a policy question about the whole city, right, and not about just the San Fernando Corridor.
Actually, you're correct. It would apply to citywide.
Maybe we should agendize that and have a discussion about it, if you want.
Is this item simply about design review and how did this come to us? I think it was before I came on City Council, so...
I brought this forward because in the past, the San Fernando Corridor area was a redevelopment area, so it didn't have the regular check process of going through the Planning Commission and going through Design Review Board. We, the redevelopment area is gone. It's now the same as the rest of the city. My feeling is it should be treated the same as the rest of the city, and projects should go through design review, and they should go to Planning Commission if appropriate, and go through the process and let the public have their say at the Design Review Board, have their say at the Planning Commission, instead of expediting them to us directly, which is what's been happening. And there's, I don't see any justification at all for treating that area differently anymore. It's the same now as the rest of the city, technically. There's no...
With the dissolution of redevelopment.
With the dissolution of redevelopment.
Well, why should the city manager have more power than a city councilman? I ask you, we're the ones who are elected, although he has professional, generally have professional training and experience. You know, I think we're at least on par with the city manager. I mean, or the mayor, or, you know.
If you want to have this discussion and have a debate about whether or not these should come, then you should agendize it and have the discussion.
I think we can find a formula whereby council can bring, but I do agree that we do become susceptible to lobbying. But I think there is something that can be worked on, so we can agendize that issue.
Let's agendize a discussion at a later date. I will abstain from this vote.
But let's be clear, this vote is just to make the San Fernando Corridor like the rest of the city. It's not to do anything except return it to what it was before it had been a redevelopment area, now that it's no longer a redevelopment area. And if someone can tell me any reason why this area should now be treated differently, I think it's, it should be the same as the rest of the city.
Well, I'll tell you why it should be treated differently. I mean, this is, we've identified this as a creative corridor. There's a lot of attention being drawn to it, that the decisions made in this corridor are much, I think, more visible than a, you know, a home tucked in the woodlands.
Okay, there's the Montrose Shopping District. We have a lot of other commercial areas that are not dissimilar. But to me, returning this to what it was gives the public a lot more chance to weigh in on issues. The whole idea of getting rid of Design Review and Planning Commission review for that area was to streamline the process, to make it faster, to give the public less chance. This gives the public a lot more bites at the apple in terms of weighing in on these projects. And I, by the way, as much as I think we're all brilliant up here, the Design Review Board has a lot of experts, architectural experts, who I think are very well-trained to give input on projects. And I do believe that projects that go through that process come out better on the other end. So I think it's a good thing to have them go through. If they do come to us, I'd rather that they have their stamp on it first. I think that's maybe one of the problems that we've had with projects in the downtown, is they haven't gone through design review. And, you know, I think that these will be better projects for going through the process. That's all. You have a report?
Any questions?
I see a long PowerPoint being queued up over there.
All right, so we'll close the public hearing.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
You have a second? No, you don't need a second. Very good. Anyone want to adjourn?
Some move.
Adjourn, second.
Okay, we're adjourned for the special meeting.